May Hapon sa tanan. Mr. Secretari, majority floor. All the regular members. Okay? May Hapon, the 139th regular session. Send ganyan pang sudak pa 'yan sa Kagayan di Oro. It's now call on to order. Please do stand. Please do stand for the invocation. For an invocation by Councillor Edna Magbanda Hino. Mayong Hapon kanin mo, Kunti Hala.
Let us all bow our heads and put ourselves in the holy presence of God. Benevolent Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty and most loving heavenly Father, we praise you. We thank you for this wonderful afternoon, oh God. Thank you for this opportunity gathering here today. Lord, we acknowledge that we are all sinners. With this, we humbly ask forgiveness. Cleanse our hearts, oh God, so that we will be worthy of your unconditional love. Father God, as we continue to do our task, the last session that we ever have, we humbly ask your wisdom for us to be able to do what has to be done. Lord, we acknowledge that, Father God, that without you, we can do nothing. That is why, Lord, is we end our 19th City Council. Thank you for sustaining us, especially in my presence here. Thank you very much, Father God, for giving me opportunity to serve your people. Lord, we pray that all these activities that we have in front of us, we can do to the best of our ability, Lord. And Father God, as we face the 20th City Council, I pray that maghari ang inong kaayos sa matag-usa. Father God, dili na mabuhat ang among gusto buhaton sa among kinabuhay na ikaw mahimuot ka na mo. That is why, Father God, we pray nga sa katapusan nga among himoona session sa 19th City Council, nalipay ka unta, Ginoo, sa among dipamuha. Salamat kaayo for giving myself to this city, Father God. And thank you for the people na naghatag na kung kagalayunan. Ngamahimong makhatag ko sa gamay ni mong udako ni mong gihatag. Ngamang grasyang ang gihatag din mo sa'ko. Father God, I pray nga kini nga 19th City Council, and even the 17th, 18th, and 19th City Council. I learned a lot, Father God, in government service. Salamat kaayo for the glimpse of this politics and the service to humanity. Salamat kaayo nga pini mahimong model kung sa mga maayon akong dibuhatin, out nga malampasan pakil, Father God, kung mahimuot ka sa tanan na nag-alagad ang isyudad sa Kagayan di Oro. Kining tanan, Father God, dili na mabuhat kung wala ikaw sa... Continue to pray nga ikaw maga-amping sa matag-usa. Give us your protection, Father God, sa tanan namong napagabuhaton o sa tanan namong plano ng buhaton pa sa among kinabuhay. We do not know what tomorrow will bring, Father God, sa ikaw. We will always trust in you and trust sa ino ang among siyudad. Among dipalanga, Lord, hinaut na ang magsunod ng City Council mas palangaon pa ang dakmaan sa Kagayan, Lord. All these things that we ask in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councillor Edna Magbanda Hino. And for the singing of Power National Anthem. For the Kagayan di Oro march. Mayong Hapon sa tanan. May Hapon, to all the who are present this afternoon's regular sessions, 139th regular session, by the 19th City Council, and so as Mr. Secretari, majority floor, and so as to the regular members of the 19th City Council, mayong hapon. To those who are present at the back, mayong hapon kanin 'yung tanan. And those watching us via Zoom, Zoom and YouTube, social media, mayong hapon, to all the people. Kagayan di Oro, mayong hapon. Mr. Secretari, mayong hapon kanin mo, aktor ko di San Miguel. Mayong hapon.
Good afternoon.
Can you do the call? We do have a call room this afternoon, and determine if we do have a call room. Mayong hapon kanin mo.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. Honorable Renner Joakin Voe, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer, for the First District Councilors, Honorable Edna M. Dahino, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable Saldy O. Okon, Honorable George I. Go King, Honorable Roben R. Daba, Honorable Lordan Giswan, Honorable Romeo B. Calizo. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable Maria Lourdes Isgaani, Honorable Iron Mark Yuna Kaya, Honorable Suzette G. Magtaas Daba, Honorable Enrico Di Salcedo, Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas. For the ex-official members, Honorable Yan Lam Slim, Ligan na mga barangay president, and Honorable John Michael Arseno, City Escape Federation President, there is a call room, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a call room. So thank you, Mr. Secretari, with all the call room. Should be... This moment? Okay. Majority floor leader, Iron Mark Yuna Kaya, mayong hapon kanin mo, majority floor.
Mayong hapon, Mr. Presiding Officer. Vice Mayor Renner Joakin, Belis, Kikang Uwi. This is our last session for the 19th City Council.
Could be the last.
Our 139th regular session. So may we congratulate, before I proceed, Mr. Chairman, the Presiding Officer for the startling performance that he has executed his duties without absent from presiding this session of the City Council.
Okay, thank you, majority floor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
And so as... But maybe, maybe we will start a while or...
Later.
Okay, later. Okay, maybe since I'm not just the one, we do have a fellow councilman will be graduating also. Maybe we have to conduct such a special report afterwards, then we will then to follow. Okay.
Thank you. We'll do that, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you very much.
Majority floor leader.
Vice Mayor Kikang Uwi. And may I also greet our colleagues of the Council, mayong hapon, and the friends from the media, fellow Kageanons, mayong hapon. I move Mr. Chairman to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on June 20, 2022, and to consider the publishing of its copy to every member as the reading itself. Dispensation of the minutes of meeting.
Okay, properly move by the majority floor leader. Any second, seconded correction? Is there any correction? There is none. Hearing, and it is a way approved. It is a way approved.
I likewise move for the approval of the set minutes of meeting.
So it's finally the seconded.
We have one member who would like to render a special report considering that there was a special report of Councillor Romeo Calizo that triggers discussion as regards the Pataga High School that this city would like to implement, but due to some circumstances, it had not been implemented, Mr. Chairman. So the Chair of the Committee on Education, Councillor Suzette Magtaas Daba, would like to respond to the reported appeal of the barangay people of Patag. That would be followed, Mr. Chairman, by the graduating members of the City Council who are either on their last term, Mr. Chairman, or who would not be back on the 20th City Council. And on this sequence, Mr. Chairman, Councillor Saldy Okon, Councillor Dokbo Buidaba, Councillor Edna Inday Dahino, and Councillor Enrico Salcedo. So maybe as first the Chair to recognize Councillor Suzette Magtaas Daba.
Only, only one special report?
Yes, only one.
Okay, so Councillor Suzette Magtaas Daba. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader, Iron Mark Yuna Kaya. Okay, I will be on the floor. Councillor Suzette Magtaas Daba. Mayong hapon kanin mo, Kunti Hala.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mayong hapon sa tanan. I would just like to read the official statement from the City Legal Office regarding the status of the property where Patag National High School was supposed to be constructed. So the Patag National High School project has been indefinitely put on hold because the 4th Infantry Division Philippine Army of the Armed Forces of the Philippines has prevented entry and withheld possession of the property purchased by the City Government of Kagayan di Oro City for the project. The property is surrounded by a perimeter fence and currently used by the 4th ID AFP as a recreational area. So property details, prior to purchase, owner, Osayas del Puerto, sellers, heirs of Osayas del Puerto, Lot 4355-A PSD 10-006588, title TCT number T69329, area 10,529 square meters. Present after purchase, owner is already the Department of Education, City Schools Division of Kagayan di Oro, Lot number 1, title TCT number 1372018002561, area 10,000 square meters. Only a portion was purchased. How was the interest of the City Government protected prior to purchase? To evaluate the purchase of a lot, the primary matters to consider are the title of the seller over the property, which consists of documentation and whether the possession over the property will be obtained and undisturbed. The documentation at the time the property was offered was all above the board. The property was covered by a valid and existing title, TCT number T69329. The ownership of the sellers has been affirmed and confirmed by final order of the Court of Law as follows. Letter A, decision dated January 14, 2013, through which the Regional Trial Court directed that the ownership of the property will be conveyed to the heirs of Osayas del Puerto, and they will be restored in possession. The title of the Kagayan di Oro Country Club will be canceled. Decision dated July 13, 2015, of the Court of Appeals, Kagayan di Oro City affirms the decision dated January 14, 2013 in total. Entry of judgment dated May 20, 2016 issued by the Court of Appeals, providing that the decision dated July 13, 2015 has become final and executive. The ownership of the heirs of Osayas del Puerto is also supported by the records of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, CENRO B500B initao, which shows that the only claimant of Lot 4335-A PSD 10-006588 is Osayas del Puerto as proven by the certification dated August 17, 2018. The best way to test whether there will be opposition to obtaining possession is to conduct a relocation survey. Hence, in preparation of the purchase, a relocation survey was conducted in coordination with the local government of barangay Patag, Kagayan di Oro City. The Patag LGU notified the parties concerned of the relocation survey, the Kagayan Country Club Incorporated by means of the letter dated August 12, 2016, the 4th ID by means of the letter dated August 22, and the City Engineers Office of the CDO LGU by means of the letter dated August 24, 2016. A relocation survey was conducted within the last week of the August 2016 by City Engineers Office in the presence of Sergeant Ukab of the 4th ID AFP and Cristina Martinez representing the heirs of Osayas del Puerto. Lot 4355, the property offered by the heirs of Osayas del Puerto had an area of 10,529 square meters. The object of the relocation survey was to identify and segregate a 10,000 square meter portion because this is the only area intended to be purchased. The relocation survey was conducted successfully. The 10,000 square meter portion was segregated and the points were identified then. Concrete monuments were installed to mark the points. The identified portion was temporarily designated Lot 4355-8-1. The parties present did not raise any objection or resistance to the survey. There was no indication or notice that the eventual taking of possession of the DepEd CDO and CDO LGU would be opposed as proven by the letter report dated September 1, 2016. So I'm not gonna read all what the City Legal has provided me with the status, but I would just like to read the last portion of what the City Legal gave me. Paragraph G of the Memorandum of Understanding, dated December 8, 2016, specifically states that "In order to have full access to and from the subject property and for the purpose of ingress and address for vehicular and pedestrian traffic, the seller fully recognizes, grants, and guarantees the LSB and the DepEd CDO, their representatives, assigns, and successor in interest the perpetual and unrestricted right and full use of the access road." So on May 29, 2017, the heirs of Osayas del Puerto executed the extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale dated May 29, 2017. And it reads, "The heirs vendors hereby warrants and represents to the vendee that the subject property upon the execution of the extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale is free from all tenants, lessees, occupants, dwellers, or caretakers, and/or that any disturbance compensation due therefore have already been fully paid and settled." So what are... So what are the efforts made to gain possession? So there were several attempts to obtain possession. Through diplomatic means were made. Initially, the 4th ID AFP offered another parcel of land in exchange of the Del Puerto property, but the offered property was far from suitable to be used as location for the Patag National High School. In the formal demand dated December 11, 2017, the CDO LGU demanded that the heirs of Osayas del Puerto clear the litigated property of all occupants and dwellers and deliver possession of said property and provide unrestricted access. So the property purchased was well documented. Prior to the payment of the 50% of the consideration, a relocation survey was conducted with notice to and participation of agents of the 4th ID. During the survey, there was no opposition or resistance. The 4th ID AFP has ignored a title registered under the Torrance system. Disregarded, a final decision of the Regional Trial Court affirmed by the Court of Appeals. The action of the 4th ID AFP, which has blocked the City Government from performing a public service to the youth of barangay Patag has no basis in law, violates public policy and good customs, and is contrary to good conscience. The only remaining option is the institution... The only remaining option is the institution of an action before the Court of Law. Thank you, Ogma, yong hapon sa tanan.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Suset Magtahas Daba. Since the one who report... I think Councilor Romeo Caliso is the one who reporting about that information, but is in official business, so maybe we can we can see to it that that information will be given to him once he will arrive and officially at...
Will furnish capital to Councilor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Suset Magtahas Daba for your informative report this afternoon. In response to the special report of Councilor Romeo Caliso, in response also for the information asked by the Barangay Council of Barangay Patag. Okay, so that could be a sole reporter this afternoon. So, since this could be our last session, 139th
139th
regular session of the 19th City Council. I think this could be the moment to bid farewell and so as to bid...
For now.
Well, I will be the one to give thanks and so as to say goodbye. Well, goodbye, at least this could not be forever, but this could be the beginning or especially to those who are graduating councilmen and so as will not officially function as an official or a member of the 19th City Council. But I wish the new council or the coming 20th City Council remain as independent. Remain as independent as may be as we practice from 18th council to 19th City Council. Well, I would like to thank our secretary, Arturo De San Miguel, salamat kayo. And so as our beautiful division heads, Maria Carla Licayan, salamat kayo on the bottom of my heart. And so as our different division heads, our four division heads, Marita Palagbas, and so as Mercy So Media, and lastly, Ricky Rosso. Salamat kayo kaninyo. I think they are monitoring in the in the our social media. And eto kalimtan, eto ang mga kauban, for the men and women in the city council, salamat kayo kaninyo. All the local government unit employees together in serving the Filipino, together in serving the Cagayanon, salamat kayo kaninyo. Our department head, salamat kayo. And so as Mayor Oscar Moreno, salamat kayo for the trust, for believing in us. The 19th City Council, salamat kayo. At the mga kauban, majority floor leader, Ayan Marti Blat Nakaya, salamat. And to all the regular members, salamat. And so as the minority, salamat kayo kaninyo. So... Well... So, this could be as since from the start, I am committed na I position wala na aman ta ka servisyo. So, this could be another challenge for us, for me also. And so as my colleagues around who are not officials anymore or members of the city council. So, kaninyo ng tanan, salamat, salamat, salamat.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. We will surely miss you for six years we are in this hall.
Yes, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Well, I have something for you guys or the members. So, I have something for you all. And so as it could be a certification to those who graduate and to the 19th City Council. And so as I have something for you also. All that since from the very beginning of the 19th City Council, I already prepared it at the back, so you can ask your staff. So, maybe, so... I am very prepared since from the start.
After the session?
After the session, you can get it. So, from me to you, fellow members.
Those people hanging.
I prepared since 2019, 2019. And so as we already for our group or all the members aapod sa lahat. So, again, salamat kayo kaninyo. This could be a learning for me. Every time we conduct our regular session, this could be a learning. And so as in public service, every day as I go around or as I went to the office, it is every day a lesson to be learned, especially in serving the people. Salamat kayo, dakba yan, kwey yo. And to all the members, kaninyo ng tanan, salamat.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Natai tagsa tagsa dito. Anyway, may we ask the chair to recognize first, Councilor Zalbi Okon, followed by Councilor Dokbo Buitaba, Councilor Edna Inday Dahino, Councilor Enrique Salcedo. If Councilor Lordan Swan would like to render also his valedictory message after Councilor Dahino, because Councilor Salcedo is asking that he would be the last. So, Councilors, Zalbi Okon first. Okay, Councilor Zalbi Okon.
Salamat, majority floor. Ayan Marti Blat Nakaya. Our presiding sir, the honorable outgoing presiding officer, Vice Mayor Renner Joaquin Quijangui. My fellow colleagues in the 9th Council, people around, friends in the media, people of Cagayan de Oro, and my family. Good afternoon. Today's during our 139th regular session of the 19th Council, I would like to take this opportunity to thank also the people of Cagayan de Oro for serving 15 years. I had been elected for the first time a City Councilor of Cagayan de Oro in May 2004. During the time, Cagayan de Oro is still loaned district. And I am number 12 during the time. Then another terms had bestowed on me by the people of Cagayan de Oro. That was May also 2007. And during this time, Cagayan de Oro is already under two district. And I am number five under district, first district of Cagayan de Oro. After the following years of being addressed, because in 2010, I attempt to run for Vice Mayor, and I was loose. After that, I was given a chance to sit as a City Councilor for three consecutive terms way back in May 2013. Number two. 2016, number one. And 2019, number four. Ended 2022, coming June 30 would be my last term as an elected official. In short, I will be bringing I will be bringing home my 15 years experiences as public servant in the city of Cagayan de Oro. My friends, fellow members, my colleagues, people of Cagayan de Oro, I will never forget, along with my family. But I have been a part of the history of the city of Cagayan de Oro, the city of golden friendship. To all the legislative families, especially our very active Secretary of the City Councils, Chair Thor and your staff, and all the job orders, my colleagues or co-members of the previous administration which I serve and the people of Cagayan de Oro. To all the legislative families, akung balikon, my colleagues or co-members of the previous and the present council as well as the fast and outgoing administration heated by former Mayor Dunggo Imano, former Mayor Tinik Charola, and outgoing Mayor Oscar Moreno, and all the Vice Mayor who my work with, namely, former Vice Mayor Michelle Espiral Tagada, former Mayor Vice Mayor Ayan Asinas, and our present, the outgoing Vice Mayor Renner Joaquin Quijangui. Daghang kayong salamat. Surpriseless, surpriseless experiences I have gained from all of you specially in serving our beloved Cagayanon. To my mother, my myological mother, Marita Okon Nasarino Orpanel, salamatay gayod kanmuma. Ug sa akong aman, selver yo, dale, selver yo okon. Tsangkanak mga lumon, mga kalumunan kuhrot. I love you. And all my kagababayan, Bagangga Dava Oriental, my home and my beloved province, and my elementary high school church, my college instructors, and above all, to God and to the Blessed Mother, the most pure. Lastly, I would like also to thank this opportunity that a woman whom I love, who care with me during my time as a City Councilor. Ogma opuy nagatiman kanako, siguro this time, I will focus my private life to focus to a woman, to a woman whom I love. Being, thank you, and to our children. Thank you very much, Vice, thank you. Maririk, thank you. Marinai, thank you. And I would like also to take this opportunity to congratulate the incoming Presiding Officer of the 20th Council. I hope my only message, that elections uma na. Let us now everybody focus our mind. Let's everybody set aside our political color and serve the people of Cagayan de Oro. And also, congratulations to the incoming members. The House of Congress, Congressman Eli, my college counselor, Lordan, Shuan, thank you.
Dalaygon ang Diyos, mukha na ang una akong pasalamatan. Og dako kayo sa dang akong pasalamat sa atong Vice Mayor Quijangui. Ang atong secretary si sir, salamat kayo. San Jose, si ma'am, salamat kayo sa akong mga kauban. And then, dako yud sagkaayo ang akong pagpasalamat sa dakba yan sa Cagayan de Oro. Labinagayod sa Distrito Uno. Sa paghatag dinyo, og, dako kayong ng mandato. Og dalaygon ang Diyos sa paghatag sagsa privileho ng makaservisyo ako sa Distrito Uno og sa dakba yan sa Cagayan de Oro. Adili kini farewell, kundili, see you next time. Dalaygon ang Diyos. Kini si Councilor Dokbo Buiroa Daba ang pagamuma sa kabataan, kalambuan sa dakba yan. Kay makitaan mayong buhat, pinaagi sa tinuod na gumba. Salamat kayo sa iyong gumba.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. And may hapon sa tanan, ako mga kauban, my fellow councilors, and of course, our friends at the back. At the mga kauban sa concejo sa secretary on the staff. Good afternoon, once again. I would like to open my valedictory address, my favorite verse in scripture. "I can do all things through Christ which strengthen me." Philippians 4 verse 13. Nine years ago, God has planted me in the city council and through his graces and presence, I have grown and bore fruits that has remained until now. Fruits that even if I live and be planted somewhere else, will still benefit his people. I never imagined to be a city councilor when I was younger. My only dream is to get out from my poor situation and I have to have a family and I will love and that will love me in return. But God's divine plan, God's divine plan for me is greater. My public service as a city council is an answered calling for me to use this powerful respected platform in order to share my story, to inspire others, and for me to be an instrument so that our people can see faith, hope, and love, and can see me differently as my brand of government service. More than anything, my joining the public service is also to reciprocate the many blessings I received from God. And he considered me worthy to be his steward. In the past nine years, we have created historic ordinances that catapult our city to where it is now. First, today we are proud to say that our government offices are drug-free by conducting mandatory drug testing to all government officials and employees. Second, Second, we have created our own gender development code, which became a benchmark for other local governments. Third, we have protected our women and children from abuses by creating the violence against women and children's deaths in all our barangays. Protected them from trafficking and constructed facilities like Oro Care Village that will not just rescue them but will give them hope to pursue their dreams in life. Fourth, we have strengthened the morality of our children by making safe space free from pornography and we have built safeguards so that we'll not become a victim of pornography. Fifth, we protected our, our environment by crafting the integrated solid waste management ordinance and declaring every fourth of July as our day or day for tree planting in our city. Sixth, we have never forgotten the importance of our barangay specialist workers such as our Tanod, BSW, and BNS. Seven, we never cease in finding opportunities for our economy to grow so that we can provide jobs and business opportunities to our people. Being the chairperson of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations for six consecutive years, we made sure we passed the city budgets, budget that can certainly totally transform our communities. First, we supported the budget of all departments so that they can do their jobs effectively and in turn can affect real change in our communities. Second, we prioritized budget to ensure that our people can have access to quality health care service with zero balance bill at JR Borja City Hospital. Third, we fund for the construction of two additional hospitals at Barangay Tablon, Barangay Lumbia, for us to bring our health services closer to our people and greatly improved the infrastructure and medical equipment of JR Borja Hospital. Fourth, we heavily invested for land banking to make sure our people will have a decent and affordable housing. Fifth, we approve appropriations for road networks in urban and rural, rural areas, making sure that farm-to-market roads will be prioritized for the benefit of our farmers. Sixth, we approved the renovation of our public markets, allocated funds for our sanitary land, landfill. Seven, we secured millions of pesos for our more than seven thousand city scholars studying in both state and private colleges and universities. Eight, we backed all infrastructure projects that needs budget to boost our economy, create job and livelihood opportunities, and support the different sectors of society. We were heavily criticized for approving big-ticket projects, but I am firm in my resolve that these projects may seem unpopular now, but I am sure the people will thank us later. There are just some of the milestones we have done. However, these are not just by my doing alone. There are hundreds of faceless heroes who helped me champion my advocacy, especially women and children empowerment. They are the people sent by God. To my family, thank you for allowing me to serve Cagayan de Oro. Of all people who have sacrificed a lot, but I am proud to say that your sacrifices were not put into vain. I know that you will be proud of me wherever you go because I have served my city with my integrity and dignity intact. I am grateful for my staff and the secretariats of the city council who always support me, who work tirelessly with me. Thank you for sharing my advocacy and aspirations and for believing in me. Indeed, it is an honor to work with you. I am also thankful and honored to work with my colleagues whose sincerity, dedication, and professionalism is without question. My heartfelt appreciation and gratitude also goes to our Vice Mayor Quijang Uy for the trust and confidence and in allowing me to hold important committee chairmanships. I admire you, Vice, for your leadership despite of young, of your young age. Nagwonder ganikog how you lead us, medyo tagas na kitamong mga edad compared sa ino. But you, I, I never remembered na kanang naglisod ka sa amo. You're, you're so kind to us. Though taas among mga edad, as I've said, na lisod ba yud ilead ang mga tagas na kaig ka ng, ay kung sa iro pa, kanang old dogs, na dili nagyud siya matudluan. Ba pero dili man ta mga iro. Hahaha, tao uman ta. So I do believe na munang you treat us as human. Uh, thank you, Vice, thank you. So lastly, I am grateful to my supporters and critics. Through your support and constructive criticism, I became who I am right now. I'm still growing and I can truly say that God's mission for me in the city council was accomplished. As I leave this honor chamber, honor chamber, my prayer is for the next city council to continue to hold the church and to keep the fire burning. May you continue to cooperate closely for the continued development and economic recovery of Cagayan de Oro and its people. May you continue to be sensitive to the needs of our brothers and sisters who have less in life. A council that sincerely cares about the pride of the less privileged and acts to improve their condition and a council that inspires our people. As I can, as I journey being a private citizen again, I am confident you'll never be able to forget Inday Dahino. Every time you will sing the Cagayan de Oro March, you will be reminded of me. Ay no sa puton mo ani kada adla, kadas sesyon. Ah, magbarino ang inyong ulo because every time ang magkanta mo ani is Inday Dahino, inyong madum duman. Because I am the one who is author this, this Cagayan de Oro March to promote the love for Cagayan de Oro, which I love. Nine years. I will continue to be your partner in Asian building in any way I can. I will continue to follow and answer God's calling. I will continue to dare where he leads me because again, I can do all things through Christ which strengthen me. Thank you, my colleagues in the nineteenth city council. More power to you, to God be the glory. Thank you very much.
Mingaon niyo kaani, pag tindog na to, Adri. Uh, you know what, every time I would walk up to this podium, uh, got kubakubagin na nga akong kasingkasing, niya, even until now, until this very moment, mooragyapon. Uh, isa lang na sa mga memories nga akong nakuandirisa at wasa sa city council. So, mapasalamat lang ko sa tanan mga, mga staff na to sa city council. Si, siyempre si Sir Torx. Torx, salamat kayo sa imontabang. Si Katrina Reza, KR, thank you. Si Mam Fe, Sir Julius. Si, uh, Sir Virgo, Herbert Namata. Uh, Sir Ray Lau, Sir Hector, Sir Conconel. Og si Gerard, og siyempre si Mam Mercy, si Mam Laurie Beth, si Mam Marieta, and of course Mam Carla. Uh, salamat kayo, siya tininingpo, salamat kay. Um, you know what, the, I think the past six years of my life, when I was a city councillor, were, were the most amazing years of my life. And they were also the most, the scariest and the worst years of my life. One of the scariest things nga akong ka-experience yud, kay dirig yud sa city council. Grabe kikain, uh, I know that we don't see eye to eye. We almost never see eye to eye because we are from different, um, parties. Pero karun pa na ako nasaptan nga, nag-inana, hiritag mo agig inana. Karun mo grow po ta as a person. So, kanang kulbaan niyo kiko. Kana mahistoria, Adri, wag lalista kay, akong una una, ako ra isa, tabangan ko anig. Disisays ka po kong mga councillors, niya dibyan, na mga basta-basta nga mga tao, mga bright, mga banggeitan. Uh, but, uh, Karun, I don't, I don't take it personally. Um, this is me extending my hand of friendship and reconciliation to each and every one of you because I believe that, um, a gem is not polished without friction, nor a person perfected without trials. And we are on this earth for a very, very short span of time and it would be a monumental waste if we, if we have grudges or ill feelings. So, um, to the honorable Vice Mayor Quijang Uy, uh, God bless you, sir, and, um, I wish you well. To the majority floor leader, Ayah Nakaya. Uh, salamat po, uh, majority floor. Si, uh, Kagawad Jan Michael Sino. Uh, God bless po, si Kagawad Roger Abaday, sir. Si, uh, councillor Eric Salcedo, uh, councillor Doc Buboy Daba. Of course, si, uh, Vice, incoming Vice Mayor Bibot Rodriguez. Salamat, ma'am. Bibo keta, maski duha ra ta ka po. Uh, si, uh, councillor attorney Ed Cabanlas. Si, uh, councillor Alam Lim. Nugay na kinakong amigo, maski yang anak, barkada kay nako. Uh, si, of course, my good friend, uh, Saldi Okon. Si J Pasqual Po, sayang wala, Adri. Councillor J, si councillor Suset Magtahas. Set, peace na ta. Hahaha. Uh, si councillor, uh, Gerli Balaba, ma'am. And of course, Tita Inday Dahino. It was an honor serving with you. Um, it's really a great honor to be here and I am going to miss each and every one of you and I hope that when we see each other again, whether on the streets or on the mall or even here in city hall, it will not be as strangers but as friends and former colleagues. So God bless, tehan salamat.
Mayong, mayong adlaw sa akong mga kauban, diri sa concejo, sa atong mga isita. Karu adlawa sa ug kanatong tanan. It is an honor for me to be here and to be here for one last time. Akong kinasingkasing na pagpasalamat sa tanan, miduyung, sa akong tulok at termino. Na pagserbisyo, ug pagalagad sa mga katawan, sa dakba yan, sa Cagayan de Oro. It was not an easy task, but it is so fulfilling to reminisce the achievement that I have accumulated through the years of service I have imparted in this august body. Mr. Chairman, atong two thousand thirteen, may akong pagsubut isip, concejal, sa dakba yan, sa Cagayan de Oro. Duha ragitin tawamigidaw sa Distrito. Ang gidaog makakisunan, oban sa akong mentor, si late councillor Bunglaw, gani naayang pamilya, diri karun. Sigurado ko nga naput si councillor Bunglaw. Diri karun mga kaiksunan tungod kay, I amang dungan man, last term umpo dia, ang akong mentor. Two thousand thirteen, ang tuig din ako, nagsubut isip, concejal, sa dakba yan, sa Distrito Dos. Dili kalimod, nga atong mga panahuna, pipila lamang kami nga naa sa administrasyon ni Mayor Moreno. Limitado lamang ang atong tabangan natunol, atong mga tuiga apandili kinibabag. Kaya ang pagpanerbisyman ang atong tumong. Atong panahuna, ako ang chairperson sa Committee on Social Services. Kung aha atong gitutukan ang city council for the protection of children, din ang tumong nini mau ang paghatag o proteksyon sa mga minod di edad, na mga kabatan unan, ang pagidukar sa mga ginikanan, sa ilang responsibilidad, dia sa ilang mga anak. Oban, pa mga loophole rights, atong mga kabatan unan, nining usap atong na reactivate ang DCPC or ang Barangay Council for the Protection of Children, where I believe until karun panahuna, existing pagyapun, um, Mr. Chairman. Atong two thousand sixteen. Atong two thousand sixteen, Mr. Chairman. Duha langyapun migidaw, oban sa akong mentor, si councillor Bunglaw. Uh, tongi gayo na, naami kang sa two thousand thirteen, naami kang, um, Mayor Moreno, baka two thousand sixteen, naami kang Congressman Rupus. Oh, usbun ako mga kaiksunan, duha langyapun migidaw. Sa ako ikaduwang termino, din kita, na mim, na mimbruna sa majority, apan na kita manatu ang tumong sa kadaghanan mau ang paghatag o kaiwan sa mga katawan sa syudad. Kita ni supporta sa tanan, kalihukan, ug mga balood nun nga gusto sa administrasyon ni Mayor Oscar Moreno, kay nakita sa nako, Mr. Chairman, nga para man, ngatto sa katawan. Usap ako magpasalamaton sa akong mga kauban, ug sa atong BC Mayor Quijang Uy, sa kadunayong pagsoporta, sa atong pagpaningwa, na makahatag o kaiwan para sa tanan. Sa akong ikaduwang na termino, na approve ang city ordinance one three one nine five dash two thousand seven seventeen. Kini nga ordinance ang punta, panahon ta is two thousand thirteen, pero tungod kay atong igayo na, nasayod man ta, na grabe kayo ang struggle at to sa city council sa first term, na to, first term ni Mayor Oscar Moreno, atong napapasar, atong two thousand sixteen, ang parental responsibility code of Cagayan de Oro ug ang city ordinance number one three two seventy-three dash two thousand seventeen, ang Barangay Tanod Development Committee ordinance of Cagayan de Oro, um, mga kaiksunan. With this ordinance, I was able to impart guidelines to the barangay council in promoting and helping those personnel in barangay level. We were able to uplift some moral values to the people of this city. Isip, usap, chairperson sa komitiba, sa kooperative, sa tuig two thousand sixteen, su two thousand nineteen. Natagan kami ug panahon nga makahatag o makapaabot sa mga, sa, ngatto sa mga community dat, sa dakba yan, ug mga seminar, may tungod sa kooperatiba, hindi, undin, ubay-ubay ang naka-interes, ug tokod. Ubay-ubay ang naka-interes o tukod sa mga micro cooperatives. Natagan na to o kaalam, especially katong mga inahan na walay ligaw na naaalang sa ilang panimalay o pamahagi na makap-generate o income pinag-ipaghatag o mga livelihood trainings. Sa makausapa, ako magpasalamaton na despite sa nakalilain opinyon, kami nagkaiusag giapun sa usa. Tumong mauang paghatag sa kaiwan o paghatag sa serbisyo ngat to sa mga katawan. And atong 2019, sa ikatulo, na too katapusan na termino. Sa ikatulong ikaayon, ngayin yong gitagaan di hatag kanako, ngayin yong akong himong konsial sa rakbayan. I was able to continue serving the people through giving them the services that this August body has to offer. As we all know, it has been two years kapin since this pandemic COVID-19 started. Tibo kalibutan ang nagatubang sa economic crisis. Tungod ni aning pandemic, nakukining dago kanatong tanan. Daghan ang apektado ni ini ilabin na katong mga gagmay sektor, mga negosyante, ugang atong mga kaigsunan na naa sa ubo sa utong sa katilingban. Na nawatan o panginabuian. Inobanan sa supporta sa atong BC Mayor o kita nakapabot sa atong ginagmay na tabang diya sa katawan sa rakbayan na kahatag giapun kita o mga relief goods o hygienic kits para masking sa ginagmay na pamahagi na kahatag kita kaginhawaan sa kalisod. Ngagatubang sa atong mga katawan. This last term has mostly went slow because of many restriction and health guidelines. Dili kita basta-basta makahatag diretsa sa mga tabang na buot na to ihatag sa katawan. But despite it all, we always make sure that we do our best to reach out to people those in great need. On this 19th City Council, I became the Chairperson of the Committee on Environment. Wherein, the City Ordinance Number 13952-2020 Streamline Guidelines for Telecommunication Tower Infrastructure. Salamat kong Mr. Chairman, na approved sa konseyo o gisoportaran sa atong mga kauban. This enabled the telecommunication industry a quicker processing time under application for faster service to the consumers. Also we able to propose an ordinance for environmental code of Kageyan di Oro City diin anaah nining ordinan sa ang pagka-ikaw sa pagbantay o pagamping sa atong environment. Kaya ato yung na kita na dili mayo na resulta kong ato lamang pasagdan na hugaw ang atong palibot. With that being mentioned about, akong siyam katuig na pagpanerbisyo sa rakbayan. Daghan kayong ups and downs. Pero sa ako, pangginon, ako magpasalamaton giapun kay masking pas na kalilain na atong prinsipyo. Opinyon diri sa konseyo. Kita na kaiusag giapun sa atong pagpanerbisyo para sa katawan sa rakbayan. Akong panginawot na susunod na mahimong Chairperson sa Committee on Cooperative. Mapadayon punta ang pagtukod sa pekdo. Anong sabi ni pekdo? Ang pekdo makakisunan mukning People Empowerment Cooperative Development Office. Labina sa atong madungga na speech ni Mayor Elect Clarixui na gitagaan yang pagtagad ang kooperatiba para makatabang ngat to sa mga ikuuntag naa sa ubo sa utong sa katilingban. Kun ahamas atong mapalao ang kaalam sa mga katawan sa kaiwan o da kung tabang mahatag sa kooperatiba o sa next Chairperson sa Committee on Environment, akong dihangyo na maapprove punta ang proposed ng Environment Code diin anaan na kini sa last phase, sa finalization. Once again, my sincerest and deepest thank you to all the people. Sa akong pamilya, sa akong mga relatives, sa atong mga kaigalaan, sa atong staff, dini sa City Council nagipanguluan ni Torx, di San Miguel, ang Mayor Moreno, ang Vice Mayor, Kikangui. Sa akong mga kauban, dini sa City Council, daghan di kayong salamat sa diin daghan, taas-tas po na ang atong mga eksperiyensya sa four nine years mga kaigsunan. Usbun ako, daghan di kayong salamat o daghan po kaitang nakatugnan sa nakalilain sa mga batasan, sa atong pagserbisyo, sa ngat to sa katawan mga kaigsunan. Mayong apun kanatong tanan.
Thank you very much for the kind messages delivered by our colleagues in the councils who are graduating and who will not be joining us in the next City Council. Our good presiding officer, the Vice Mayor himself, has prepared a distinguished plaque of commendation for those who will be graduating from the disciplinary hall. And may I read for this purpose the citation of the distinguished plaque of commendation. First is, may we ask the Honorable Enrico Eric Di Salcedo, please join the platform of the presiding officer. The plaque reads, Honorable Enrico Di Salcedo, City Councillor, 2013 to 2016, 2016 to 2019, and 2019 to 2022, for his highly commendable and exemplary devotion to public service as determined, resolute, persistent, genuine, sincere, honest, and dedicated member of the 17th and 18th, 18th and 19th City Council Sangguniang Panglongsod of Kageyan di Oro. And for being an epitome of public official and admired legislator worthy of humiliation for offering and sponsoring various local legislations to enhance, promote, and uphold the interest and welfare of the city's residents. Given this 27th day of June 2022 in the city of Kageyan di Oro, signed his honor the Vice Mayor Rinier Joaquin Velez, Kikangui. So congratulations, the Councillor Enrico Salcedo. The next honorary and awarded is Honorable Ruben R. Daba. Please join the Vice Mayor. Again, may I read the citation, distinguished plaque of commendation awarded to Honorable Ruben R. Daba, City Councillor 2016 to 2019 and 2019 to 2022, for his highly commendable and exemplary devotion to public service as determined, resolute, persistent, genuine, sincere, honest, and dedicated member of the 18th and 19th City Council Sangguniang Panglongsod of Kageyan di Oro. And for being an epitome for public, as public official and admired legislator worthy of humiliation for offering and sponsoring various local legislations to enhance, promote, and uphold the interest and welfare of the city's residents. Given this 27th day of June 2022 in the city of Kageyan di Oro, signed by his honor the City Vice Mayor Rinier Joaquin Velez, Kikangui. Congratulations. Congratulations to Councillor Dokbo Boydaba. Thank you for your service. The next honorary, the awarded is City Councillor Edna M. Dahino. Again, may I read the citation, distinguished plaque of commendation. Is awarded to Honorable Edna Inday M. Dahino, City Councillor 2013 to 2016, 2016 to 2019, and 2019 to 2022, for her highly commendable and exemplary devotion to public service as determined, resolute, persistent, genuine, sincere, honest, and dedicated member of the 17th, 18th, and 19th City Council Sangguniang Panglongsod of Kageyan di Oro. And for being an epitome of public official and an admired legislator worthy of humiliation for offering and sponsoring various legislations to enhance, promote, and uphold the interest and welfare of the city's residents. Given this 27th day of June 2022 in the city of Kageyan di Oro, awarded by his honor City Vice Mayor Rinier Joaquin Velez, Kikangui. Congratulations. The next honorary or awarded is Councillor Zaldi Okon. Again, may I read the citation for Councillor Okon. Distinguished plaque of commendation is awarded to Honorable Zaldi O. Okon, City Councillor 2013 to 2016, 2016 to 2019, and 2019 to 2022, for his highly commendable and exemplary devotion to public service as determined, resolute, persistent, genuine, sincere, honest, and dedicated member of the 17th, 18th, and 19th City Council of Kageyan di Oro. And for being an epitome of public official and admired legislator worthy of humiliation for offering and sponsoring various local legislations to enhance, promote, and uphold the interest and welfare of the city's residents. Given this 27th day of June 2022 in the city of Kageyan di Oro, signed by his honor City Vice Mayor Rinier Joaquin Velez, Kikangui. Congratulations. The next honorary awarded is Councillor Lordan G. Swan. Again, may I read the citation, distinguished plaque of commendation. Is awarded to Honorable Lordan G. Swan, City Councillor 2016 to 2019 and 2019 to 2022, for his highly commendable and exemplary devotion to public service as determined, resolute, persistent, genuine, sincere, honest, and dedicated member of the 18th and 19th City Council of Kageyan di Oro. And for being an epitome of public official and an admired legislator worthy of humiliation for offering and or sponsoring various local legislations to enhance, promote, and uphold the interest and welfare of the city's residents. Given this 27th day of June 2022 in the city of Kageyan di Oro, signed by his honor City Vice Mayor Rinier Joaquin Velez, Kikangui. Congratulations. We would like to award, the City Vice Mayor would like to award a posthumous distinguished plaque of commendation to the family of Councillor Chudolfo Bonglaw Jr., Teacher Donde Lau. She's joined by his children and sister. Sister of Councillor Lau. Distinguished plaque of commendation posthumous is awarded to Honorable Chudolfo Bong E. Lau Jr., City Councillor 2013 to 2016, 2016 to 2019, and 2019 to 2022, for his highly commendable and exemplary devotion to public service as determined, resolute, persistent, genuine, sincere, honest, and dedicated member of the 17th and 18th, 19th City Council of Kageyan di Oro. And for being an epitome of public office and an admired legislator worthy of humiliation for offering and sponsoring various local legislations to enhance, promote, and uphold the interest and welfare of the city's residents. Given this 27th day of June 2022 in the city of Kageyan di Oro, signed by his honor City Vice Mayor Rinier Joaquin Velez, Kikangui. Congratulations. Congratulations and thank you, ma'am. May we ask Councillor Edna Inday Dahino and all the members of the City Council to please join ranks with the City Vice Mayor. He has given surprises to the awardees. This time we will we will tender a recognition award to our City Vice Mayor. Members of the council, please. May I read the distinguished plaque of commendation. This is awarded to the Honorable Rinier Joaquin Velez, Kikangui, the City Vice Mayor of Kageyan di Oro, 2016 to 2019, 2019 to 2022. Dito lang sa taas kay para may emblem and okay, for yes. For his exemplary commendable and exemplary devotion to public service as determined resolute, persistent, genuine, sincere, honest, and dedicated presiding officer of the 18th and 19th City Council Sanguniam Panglongsod of Cagayan de Oro. And for being an epitome of public official and admired legislator worthy of emulation for authoring and sponsoring various local legislations to enhance, promote, and uphold the interest and welfare of the city's residents. Given this 27th day of June 2022 in the city of Cagayan de Oro. Signed by the Presiding Officer Protempore Councilor Edna M. Dahino and the Majority Leader Ironmark Tiu Nakaya. Thank you, thank you. The Vice Mayor will be distributing the frame profile of each member of the City Council. May we ask our colleagues to please join the Vice Mayor as your name is called. First is Councilor Jocelyn Bebott Rodriguez, the City Vice Mayor-elect. Congratulations. Next is Councilor Ed Gabanlas. Next. Okay, okay. Councilor Gabanlas. Next is Councilor Yan Lam Lim. Si Vice Mayor Quijangui re nakahatag in ano eh. Tagsa, tagsa. Maka gahom maga na kilap. Councilor Yan Lam Lim. Next is Councilor John Michael Seno. Next is Councilor Jay Ruwa Pasqual. Smile Jay, smile. Next is Councilor Joileen Mercedes Gurley Balaba. Short hair na karon eh. After three years. Next is Councilor Suzette Magtahas Daba. Christmas, Christmas off. Next is Councilor Roger Abaday. Next is Councilor Maria Lordes Gani. Councilor Maria Lordes Gani. Ah, John. Sa kul. Ata, ata. Okay, let's settle down. Let's go back to our respective seats. May I have one so? We may now continue. So our Vice Mayor stop. Salamat kayo ganin niyo eh. Kansai, salamat kayo. So congratulations to all of us, especially those who have received a plaque of commendation cited by the Honorable City Vice Mayor for the sterling performances that they have shared and provided for the public service and for the people of Cagayan de Oro. So congratulations. For now, Mr. Chairman, may we proceed to the agenda proper?
Kanyan, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For item number one and two omnibus motion, having the same subject matter. One is proposed resolution number 2022 dash 152 returning to the Sanguniam Kabatano barangay Makabalan de City. It's resolution number zero one series of 2022. To propose resolution number 2022 dash 153 returning to the barangay council of barangay Bulua de City. It's ordinance number 22 dash 01 series of 2022. Covering the respective annual budgets for calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes with information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. Move for the approval of items one and two, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader. And seconded objection, is there any objection? There is none. Resolution number 2022 dash 152. Resolution number 2022 dash 153. Move then seconded objection. It is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, which finality?
Number three is proposed resolution number 2022 dash 154 returning to the barangay council of barangay Lumbya. This city. It's resolution number 18 series of 2018 entitled a resolution confirming the resolution number zero one eight series of 2018 authorizing that former punong barangay will help E. Valencia to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement, MOA, and deed of donation, DOD. DOD with police police station number eight of lot donation located at zone two Lumbya de City with information that said resolution is operative in its entirety. Move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader. Seconded objection, is there any objection? There is none, hearing none. Resolution number 2022 dash 154 is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, which finality? Seconded.
Number four is proposed resolution number 2022 dash 155 accrediting the Cagayan de Oro Tri- City Tribal Council indigenous political structure IPS incorporated for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to the ILG memorandum circular number 2019 dash 72 and Article 64 Rule 13 of the Rules and Regulations implemented in the 1991 Local Government Code or funding its project from the city or other sources as required under the COA circular pertinent there to move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader. Any second, seconded objection, is there any? Objection, is there any? Hearing none, hearing none. It is served by approved. Resolution 2022 dash 155. Serve approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, which finality? Seconded.
Number five is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash 115 approving the development plan BP of the Cagayan de Oro resettlement and socialized housing project dash one. Phase two, seed ownership one. P dash four located at Kalaanan barangay Kanituan de City with an area of 31,338 square meters containing 260 lots under BP 222 as applied for by the City Government of Cagayan de Oro represented by the Honorable City Mayor Oscar Es Moreno subject to the conditions imposed by the City Engineering Office, City Housing and Urban Development Department and the City Housing Board. Move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader. Any second, seconded objection? Objection, hearing none, hearing none. Ordinance number 2022 dash 115. Move then seconded. Since there is no objection, it is served by approved. It is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, which finality? Any second.
Number six is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash 116 approving the alteration of plan of a portion of gold residences subdivision under PD 957 and Economic Housing Project located in barangay Lumbya de City with an affected area of 100 square meters due to upgrading of slow protection structure particularly. Road lot number 10 from eight meters and road right of way with six meters wide carriage way to 6.60 meters road right of way with five meters wide carriage way as applied for by the Liberty Land Corporation represented by its consultant Rosa Bell B. Villanueva subject to the hearing conditions. And for this purpose amending ordinance number 13936 dash 2020 as amended by ordinance number 14114 dash 2021. Move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader. And seconded. Move and seconded ordinance number 2022 dash 116. Objection? Objection, none. It is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, which finality?
Number seven is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash 117 establishing a protection and support mechanism for survivors of the trafficking in person, child pornography, and violence against women and their children in accordance with existing laws providing for a comprehensive package of services and programs for effective and efficient recovery and reintegration and for other purposes. Author Councilor Edna M. Dahino. Move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader. And seconded objection, is there any? Is there any objection? Hearing none, hearing none. Ordinance number 2022 dash 117 is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, which finality? Seconded.
Number eight is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash 118 institutionalizing the program services privileges and benefits for solo parents and their children appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes pursuant to Republic Act number 8972 otherwise known as the Solo Parent Welfare Act of 2000. Author Councilor Edna Indai Dahino. Move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move. And seconded objection, is there any? Objection, there is none. Hearing none. Ordinance number 2022 dash 118 is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, which finality?
Nine is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash 119 strengthening participatory governance in the city of Cagayan de Oro through empowerment of civil society organizations by establishing a committee on people's organization in the City Development Council prescribing its powers and functions and providing for their participation in the local special bodies and various boards, councils, task force, and similar groups. Move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader. And seconded objection, is there any? Hearing none, hearing none. Ordinance number 2022 dash 119 is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Spence, seconded.
Move for the inclusion of items number 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. We also have one from Councilor Jay Pasqual. And the third, up to 17, last one.
Of inclusion.
Okay, 17. Move for their inclusion, Mr. Chairman.
For inclusion, any second? Seconded, Kanyan, Majority Floor.
Number 10 is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash 120. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Oscar Es Moreno as the local chief executive to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement MOA with DA Department of Health Center for Health Development Northern Mindanao to be represented by its Regional Director, Dr. Jose R. Liacona Jr., MD. B. Northern Mindanao Medical Center to be represented by its Medical Center Chief, Dr. Jose C. Chan. MD and C. Department of Health Treatment and Rehabilitation Center of Cagayan de Oro to be represented by Dr. Benson Cigo, MD. Covering the collaboration of the parties among the other areas, the provision for the treatment for moderate risk drug dependence with co-mordities under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by Majority Floor Leader. Any second? Seconded? Any second? Seconded, okay, objection, is there any? None. Ordinance number 2022 dash 120 is served by approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Second for its finality, seconded.
Number eleven is proposed ordinance number 2022-121, authorizing The Honorable City Mayor Oscar Es Moreno As The Local Chief Executive To Enter Into And Sign The Memorandum Understanding MOU With The University Research Company URC To Be Represented By Its Chief Of Party Maria Regina Hichanova Alampay Covering The Parties Collaboration And Implementation Of The USAID Renew Health Project In The City Under The Terms And Conditions Stipulated Therein. Move For Its Approval, Mr. Chairman.
Move. Seconded, objection, objection, none. Ordinance number 2022-121, is every approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Which finality, seconded?
Twelve is proposed ordinance number 2022-122, approving and adopting The Local Public Transport Route Plan Of Cagayan de Oro City As Approved By The Land Transportation Franchising And Regulatory Board Through Resolution Number 132, Series Of 2022 To Be Consistent With The Department Of Transportation Department Order Number 2017-011. Move For Its Approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by Majority Floor Leader and seconded objection? None, hearing none. Ordinance number 2022-122, is every approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Second. Second.
Number thirteen is proposed resolution number 2022-156, congratulating Dr. Leori Naga Saligan A Cagayanon Overseas Filipino Worker For Having Been Confirmed The Presidential Pamana Ng Pilipino Award Gawad Ng Pangulo By Exemplifying The Talent And Industry Of The Filipino Thereby Bringing Honor And Recognition To The Country And The City Of Cagayan de Oro Through Excellence And Distinction In The Pursuit Of His Work Of Profession. Move For Its Approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by Majority Floor Leader. And second? Seconded, resolution number 2022-156. Every approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Second. Seconded.
Number fourteen is proposed ordinance number 2022-123, approving and/or and adopting The Local Disaster Risk Reduction And Management Plan For 2022-2030 Subject To All Laws And Existing Legal Rules And Regulations. Move For Its Approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by Majority Floor Leader and seconded objection? Objection, none, hearing none. Ordinance number 2022-123, is every approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Second for its finality, seconded.
Number fifteen Is proposed ordinance number 2022-124, rezoning the land use classification From General Institutional And Residential Zone As Reflected In The Official Zoning Map Under Ordinance Number 13032-2016 To Mix Use Highly Density Commercial, C3 Highly Density Residential, R3 And General Institutional Zone Of The Lots Intended For The Development Of Xavier University Master Zone, Campos And Mangresa Town Covering P-126 Lot 3086, C8 Lot 237 And T-120049 Lot 3087-B PSD-10-030753 With An Area Of 153,513 Square Meters And 483,698 Square Meters Respectively Located At Master Zone Avenue, Balulang, The City As Applied For By Mr. Mark Liu M. Chang Representative Of Xavier University And Cebu Landmaster Incorporated. Move For Its Approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by Majority Floor Leader and a second? Seconded, objection, is there any? Objection?
Discussion.
Okay, discussion, Councillor Roger Abaday.
Thank you very much, sir, siding officers, my colleagues. Uh, I am not, uh, convinced Mr. Chairman of this ordinance. It's only stated the number of the title and the areas, but it did not specify the, did not attach here the sketch plan, the technical description and the properties overlaying the proposed zoning classification, Mr. Chairman. So I am moving, Mr. Chairman, that this will, as a rule, this will be, this will be scheduled for second reading, Mr. Chairman, so that we will know the actual assessments of this ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, okay, Councillor Edgakamanlas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As far as the attachments are concerned, they are there. Be very baga. So, and, uh, Your Honor, I'm Mr. Chairman. Now, Mr. Chairman, this was, uh, that, uh, this was not recommended by the committee, but because of the urgent call of the, our city mayor that, uh, that this will be, we had to assist as, uh, uh, this is a request from Xavier. And actually, there is no application for development permit or location of clearance. It's just, uh, it's just a change of declassification. And in fact, there is no, actually, there is no change of declassification. It's only, there are two properties, uh, applied for, for reclassification. This one, A, is a, uh, institutional program. This one is for commercial and highly, uh, residential. What Xavier University did was to apply to reclassify both by interchanging them. This one, instead of being, uh, institutional, ilang gihi mo nga commercial, do kani ilang gihi mo commercial, gihi mo nila institutional. Mulay ingon nga dun na gayo, uh, uh, differentia. Ameron is laun nga, gibalin lang, gibalin lang. There is no application yet for development permit. So ilam mo ng property dja, so.
Well, okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Edgakamanlas. Well, as we, well, as we heard, Councillor Roger Abaday, uh, well, it is not the, it is not an objection after all. So maybe the one that he is referring to and defining to or looking to is the one, the attachment. So there is already the attachment. So since it is not an objection, so maybe we cannot proceed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. May I give my, uh, give my, uh, brief, uh, I was confused, I was confused of the technical description. I know there are attachments. That's why I look for the attachment, so that we have the idea. Now, since the chairman of the committee has already, uh, explained to us. So I withdraw my, my proposal for the scheduling for the second reading. Thank you.
Okay, so, well, well, there is no motion for an objection. There is a pending proposal from the Majority Floor Leader. Properly move and seconded ordinance number 2022-124, objection, is there any? Objection, there is none, it is every approved, it is every approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Second for its finality, seconded.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is sixteen, proposed resolution number 2022-157, Returning To The Sangguniyang Kabataan Of barangay Carmen, The City. It's resolution number 02-2022, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2022 With An Estimated Income Of 10,789,929 pesos With Information That Said Resolution Is Operative In Its Entirety. Move For Its Approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader and a second from the regular members, second, any? Seconded, resolution number 2022-157, objection, is there any? Hearing none, hearing none, it is every approved.
Move to the second final reading.
Second for its finality.
This would be the last item for this tenure of office, Mr. Chairman, if there would be no more additional. For item number seventeen is proposed resolution number 2022-158, Expressing gratitude To His Honorable City Mayor Oscar Es Moreno For His Exemplary Support And Commitment To The 19th City Council Sangguniyang Panglongsood Of Cagayan de Oro. Proponents, all members, move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly move by the Majority Floor Leader, seconded objection, is there any? Hearing none, hearing none, resolution number 2022-158, is every approved.
The second final reading.
Second for its finality, seconded.
Your admin staff of the office of the Vice Mayor, if they be allowed, Mr. Chairman, to present their appreciation before the presiding officer after the session. So therefore, I move, Mr. Chairman, for the last time, for this last 19th City Council, adjourn.
Okay, session adjourn, session adjourn.
There could be a visitation, so, can't say? Take the floor.
Thank you, uh, salamat din yo.